Good morning. I'd like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on May 24th at 9:00 AM. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Terri Lucas, Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs, which the link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under People, under Board of Trustees. For those public attendees who wish to make public comment via Zoom, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda only. Our reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Heldegard Aguinaldo, Darius Anderson, Amy Costa,
Here.
Joshua Elizondo, Tom Epstein,
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa, Felicia Escobar Correa, Jelena Grande, Jelena Grande, Pamela Haynes,
Here.
Kevin Hall, Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis, Jennifer Perry, Bill Rawlings.
Something wrong?
Yeah.
They're not connected.
I'm gonna call for recess until we figure out where the members are.
Okay, I will stop the recording.
Thank you. I believe that we are all back from recess. So I would like to restart the roll call, please.
Heldegard Aguinaldo, Darius Anderson, Amy Costa,
Here.
Joshua Elizondo,
Here.
Tom Epstein,
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa,
Here.
Jelena Grande,
Here.
Pamela Haynes,
Here.
Kevin Hall, Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis, Jennifer Perry,
Here.
Bill Rawlings,
Present.
Roy Chavazian, Valerie Shaw, Julia Tarasova,
Present.
Los Villalobos,
Here.
Joseph Williams.
So thank you so much. Before we go to the pledge, well, let's go to the pledge. Tom, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So just so that, and we have a quorum, and do I understand that the quorum needs to be nine members? Is that correct?
To,
to do the action, do the business of the body.
Correct. A vote requires not a nine.
And that the vote requires nine members to be present and voting in the affirmative. So with that, we, we do have nine members here?
We have ten.
We have ten members. Okay. We have a little wiggle room. Thank you so much for that. My president's report is going to be short, but I do want to welcome us all back. This is one of the first meetings or the second meeting we've had where we're in, in person. And for many of us, we have seen each other over the video screens, but we have not seen each other in our full regalia of our physicality. And so, and that is wonderful to see after two plus years of being only virtual. So I want to welcome everyone to this particular meeting specifically. The other thing that I just want to mention is that this agenda is extremely important to me. There are two items. One of them is a voting item. The other is just an update. The first one is on the very first faculty contract that we will be discussing and hopefully we will be voting in the affirmative. And then the other is the update on the progress around our students. They are critical to the work that we do. This is the reason why we're here. And I am, I am so glad that we're moving forward on that. We have students who have been advocates as well as board members who have been advocates. We do that every day. Every day we kind of get up and for me, it is the reason why I do this work. It's the reason why I'm here. And so anytime we can talk about students is a, is a, is a good day. And so with that, I want to conclude my remarks. I'm looking forward to this agenda. And then I want to turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I'd like to thank everyone who helped plan for our first semi-in-person board meeting in more than two years. I am sorry I can't join some of you in person today in this new format. We've had an unfortunate COVID wave that hit the first grade classroom and kind of took no prisoners. I'd also especially like to thank West LA Community College for graciously hosting us in Los Angeles, and the Foundation for California Community Colleges for welcoming us to Sacramento. Finally, thank you to the board for your flexibility as we continue to adapt as the pandemic evolves. Building a new college from the ground up brings with it its share of firsts every month, a strong cadence to our progress. In March, we surpassed student body of 1,000 students for the first time. In April, we confirmed, conferred our 100th certificate. And last week at our all hands meeting, we celebrated the creation of our local CSA chapter with its newly elected leadership. Yesterday, we launched our new website that will make it easier for students to connect with us. But this month's board meeting, as Pam mentioned, marks a special day in Calbright's history. Today, I'm pleased to present for approval Calbright's first represented faculty collective bargaining agreement. This is the result of a collaborative process, and it has been approved by our local chapter of the California Teachers Association. If ratified by the board this morning, it will serve as Cal, as the college's inaugural union contract. I'd like to thank Faculty Association President Denise Tamal, former President Ashley Odell, Academic Senate President Michael Stewart, CTA Representative Robin DeVitt, faculty members Cindy Carney and Velvet Moscone, and every member of the chapter for your partnership and collaboration as we continue to lay the foundation for Calbright today and into the future. This exceptional progress and this moment of excitement, however, is paired with the California State Assembly's recent vote to advance a bill to dissolve Calbright. I want to pause here and talk about this. There is a false narrative fueled by a small group of detractors that is perpetuating this movement. It's a grotesque attack on a fellow community college advanced by a baseless claim that other campuses could do more with our funding. Now, just math aside, this conveniently sidesteps Calbright's charge to build a new model of education from the ground up and ignores the reality that success rates within the system and across the country for this community of learners is a shared challenge for us to solve. For non-traditional learners, the system-wide four-year completion rate for a chancellor's office approved certificate is less than 6%, similar to what we're seeing nationally. We can't look at these metrics, at the widening equity gaps, at the circumstances facing the communities we are losing in our education system, and think we can rise to this challenge with business as usual. Still, some in the legislature claim that Calbright's fully online model is no longer needed. The campuses were able to pivot to remote learning during the pandemic. Yet the facts tell us something else. The gap in opportunity our students face is not just the online modality, but the design of our conventional education model. This should be evident in who we're losing in public higher education and in community colleges specifically amidst historic enrollment drops that coincide exactly with that same shift to online learning. It should be evident in the rising tide of for-profit college enrollments that advertise flexible alternatives but are often costlier and riskier. This moment, and our students themselves, they are defining the need for Calbright, the need for flexibility of public approaches that honor the impossible moments where students find themselves weighted by a volatile pandemic and a deeply uneven recovery. This is not just online. That's, this has to be skills-based, flexibly paced, and kind of digitally remastered to support end-to-end experience that's really built around our learner needs. But perhaps what has been most disappointing about the pervasive misinformation is that it attempts to erase our students, who are older and overwhelmingly people of color. It is an attempt to take away their agency. Students like Alana, who didn't have the resources to finish a bachelor's degree after moving from Hawaii to California. Now, she had some experience in the research lab, and so she was able to find gig work and short-term contract positions. But those roles didn't provide enough for her to make ends meet, and she knew she needed a credential in order to find more stable employment. So she was able to enroll in our IT support program to earn her CompTIA certificates. Because of our competency-based model, she was able to move quickly through certain portions of the curriculum and take the time she needed with other material. After she passed her first certification test, she was able to find a job with a small company that provides IT support to organizations that don't have in-house teams. And in eight months, Alana went from no credential to a credential, a job, and a raise. In her own words, she says, "This job is everything I have hoped for and more." And she's not alone. Yvette is a current Calbright student and represents a small number of our student body that has a bachelor's degree. She owned a home cleaning business for 12 years now and uses Salesforce to run her company. But when the pandemic began, her clients started to cancel, and she realized she needed to make a change. She was already familiar with CRM as an end user, but she enrolled in our program to become the Salesforce administrator. What she tells us is that Calbright works with my schedule. My clients all want me the same times and sometimes are canceling all at the same times. If I went to a traditional school, I'd have to be missing classes all the time or giving up income. But at Calbright, I can take my classes at midnight if I want to, end quote. Calbright is designed so that students don't have to make the impossible decision of foregoing income in order to receive more training to advance their career. No matter how affordable tuition is, time is a part of the opportunity cost for our population of learners. And time is a central component of the traditional higher education system, the semester system, the credit hour system, the financial aid system. None of it was designed for non-traditional students. This was clear when I ran President Obama's higher education agenda, and it's clear in the actions of our students and those across the country who are juggling work, childcare, unemployment, a global pandemic, while also seeking to build a better life for themselves and their families. When we connect with education leaders across the country, whether it's in Texas or Massachusetts, Indiana, Colorado, DC, it's clear that their eyes are on California, that as we collectively work to address our shared challenges, they look hopefully to the West, to the innovation state, which has the scale, the infrastructure, and infrastructure to transform how higher education serves our students in pursuit of success. In this year alone, we've more than doubled enrollment. In this fiscal year alone, we've more than doubled enrollment and awarded more than 50 certificates. We launched our Salesforce program to the, to new programs. We're building partnerships with leading institutions like UC Irvine's Top Rank School of Education and SEIU United Healthcare Workers, and have implemented improved student support systems to nurture success where we're seeing the results. And most importantly, we are creating real opportunity for students like Alana and Yvette, for students who need our flexible model in order to enter the knowledge economy. I am fiercely proud of our progress, of our students, of our faculty and staff, and I am excited for Calbright's potential if provided the time and the space to do our work. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Before we go into closed session, I, I want to determine if there's any discussion around the order of the agenda. I don't see any hands raised or any nods. So given that the board is, will now move into closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. One, conference with labor negotiator, and two, member, excuse me, memorandum of understanding with CSEA. Is there any public comment on the closed session items?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank you. We expect to return from closed session in approximately 30 minutes. So we are back from closed session. We had one action in closed session. The board approved unanimously a memorandum of understanding with CSEA related to an individual employment matter. We're now moving to the consent agenda. That's section three of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item of consent for discussion or for a separate vote? I don't see any hands raised. So is there any public, any public comments on this consent?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right. So then can, can I get a motion in a second?
This is Member Grande. I'll move approval.
And a second?
Second.
Let him, let Joshua.
So we have a motion from Grande and a second from Bill Alobos. Please call the.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Los Villalobos.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you so much. We're now going to move to our action item. 4.1 is a third addendum to a professional service agreement with Amica Systems, Inc. And we have Paul Icock to present on this item.
Good morning, Madam President, Madam Vice President. I'm here to seek approval for an extension to our agreement with Amica Systems. This will extend the replacement of a key software engineer with us from the current June 30th end date to a new December 31st end date of this year. Increase the total contract not to exceed amount from 188,000 to 308,000. The Amica assigned engineer group has been with us since September of last year and has been flexible, very helpful during challenging times, and has critical knowledge of internal systems. His skills fill an important focus area, and he will assist us while we contender, continue our internal hiring and knowledge transfer process. Let us know if you have any questions on this issue.
Thank you for that. Trustees, are there any questions or issues related to this? Comments? I don't see any to be had. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
So can I, given that, can I get a motion in a second to approve?
To move.
I have Tarasova moving. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Rawlings.
I have Rawling, Rawling seconding. So would you please call the roll?
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Next item is 4.2. This is the ratification of collective, of the collective bargaining agreement with Calbright Faculty Association. And we have Vice President of Human Resources, Joseph Brimgarden, to present.
Good morning, President Haynes, members of the board. I'm excited to bring forth this item to you today. We are bringing forth for consideration ratification the first ever contract for the Calbright Faculty Association. This came at, with a lot of work from our faculty partners, our management staff, and it's a great collaborative work that I think honors the work of our faculty as well as the work we hope to do for our students.
Thank you. Board comments?
Yes, just very briefly, I know you've got us on a tight timeframe here, not as president. And yeah, the statute of Calbright always envisioned that there would be represented employees. And so this just really represents a milestone for the college, and I want to thank everyone for their hard work. Our faculty are absolutely key to the success of our students and in really delivering this content in a way at the time seemed very novel, but post-COVID is probably a little bit normal than we thought. So just kudos to everyone.
Other comments?
This is Rawlings. I would, I would just like to add my congratulations to everyone that was involved. This is a lot of work, and it's a good base contract that gives a lot of room for non-financial gains in the future as well as some space for financial gain through the contract negotiations in the future. So it gives us a lot of space to move, and I know how much work it took to get this done. So congratulations to CFA and to Calbright.
Thank you. Other member comments?
I thirded that.
Thank you, Jennifer. I too want to add my, my congratulations to this inaugural contract. It bodes well that the, the interest of the union as well as the interest of the organization is, has been aligned. It is a wonderful beginning relative to a contract, and so I look forward to good work happening as a result of it. Is there any public comments?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
And can I get a motion in a second to approve this contract?
It would be a pleasure to make the motion to approve this contract.
It would be a pleasure to, it would be a pleasure to second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Chavazian.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villalobos.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of us. We're now into our reports and information items. And so the first one is 5.1, which is the student government update, and we have Ted Lieu presenting.
Sorry, a little bit shorter. Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and we do have a presentation, so hoping to get that up. Thank you so much. Again, thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, members of the board. We're here to give a student government update. Next slide, please. So we'll be talking about some of the progress that we've made, some of the challenges that we've seen now, some of the next steps that we'll be taking, and then have some time for questions and comments. Next slide, and then you can actually go to the next one after that. So in terms of progress, it's oftentimes a case of out of sight, out of mind. And so this is what's happening, even though we haven't been talking about it as much. We've had some progress with students and also behind the scenes. So with students, we're providing more opportunities for feedback, getting some focus groups together to talk about a variety of different topics, just so that students get more involved with their experience as well as the experience of other students. This can also start with surveys as well, but we really want to try to bring as many students together as possible to talk and communicate. We've also done some leadership recruitment and education of what student government and participation can do to help you for future jobs, what types of transferable skills are developed when you do that. And then also, one of our students was able to attend the Student Center for California Community Colleges General Assembly, which was back in April. And that was attended by one of our IT students. Behind the scenes, we're engaging with the National Society of Leadership and Success so that we have some content to be able to help upskill our students who are interested in student government. And we've been working through some board policies and work on student governance behind the scenes. And finally, we've been designing other student leadership opportunities. So those are in the form of not just student government, but also, again, being part of the SLAC committee, trying to find someone for the budget committee. As, you know, as much as possible, if we can get student representation for these things, we're building community. And that's one of the things that leads us into the challenges then, but I'll, I'll save that for just a moment because I want to share two quotes for you. Next slide. So with our student who was able to attend the general assembly, you'll see a quote on the next slide. We asked, "How does attending events like this help you and others become better students at Calbright?" And the response was, "We learn more about procedures and how to do things, how to engage students. I certainly learned a lot about legislative procedures. I also got to see how successful people took a non-traditional path to success. Moreover, just seeing other student leaders communicate ideas and how they do it will help you understand and communicate your own ideas better." So we were really excited that even though our representative wasn't an official representative, they were there as a public because they're not a voted in member of, of student government yet. They still found this to have different qualities that would help them in careers. And the next slide, we also asked them what they would say to other students who are interested in student governance, and they said, "I would say that it will be a good experience, and you will be able to give students a voice and empower them to have a say in the direction and provision of their education. You will also be able to study different issues in depth and develop a coherent plan to help students." So this is exactly what we're looking for because we want students to be not only feeling empowered, but understanding the connections of how it can help them personally through transferable skills, but also through experiences that will eventually lead towards their career as well. Next slide. So in terms of progress, like I mentioned earlier, when we talked about progress, there are challenges as well. And so the next slide, we've put two big buckets in, and that's with encouraging and balancing. So encouraging busy students. What we found is that we have a low number of students who have expressed interest so far. What we're trying to discover is why that is. We think it has to do, of course, with the fact that they're balancing their academic journey. They're balancing their career. Many are balancing families. May, might not know what it could entail being part of student government. So these are things that we're trying to discover through more focus groups, through talking to students, through word of mouth. And then, you know, trying to figure out how we can be of service to help with that balancing of time and priorities. We don't want students to join in student government so that they stop doing their academic work. But at the same time, how, how might we help with that? Finally, the other part that has been a challenge is that there's a balance of ownership and empowerment versus guidance. And we could write the bylaws in constitution, but that would defeat the purpose of empowering students to do it. So it's almost a chicken and egg scenario now of, we need student representation so that they can complete the bylaws in constitution. And we need that to have actual voted in members of student government. So we have a small group that's growing larger, that our students are gathering others to help now. So that's kind of a each one reach one type campaign. And, and so we feel like we're now at a place where we can focus, you know, at least six students with, okay, here are the bylaws and constitution that have been proposed previously. Let's go through this. What resonates? What would possibly need to be adapted for the situation you're in? And so that leads us, and you can go two slides forward, that leads us now to our next steps. And in terms of next steps, you know, we just need to continue to understand our students and encourage involvement. When we find out that students are interested but maybe don't have time, it's trying to document what our. it's trying to document what are some of the, the different challenges for them. One of our big next steps, which we've given ourselves a deadline of hopefully end of July, is completing those bylaws and constitution led by students. We can guide them through that process. We'll be, you know, working towards helping them understand and make some time to do that. It means also setting some expectations and saying, here's the deadline we're shooting for so that they're, they understand the full breadth of what they're looking at in terms of trying to complete and by when. Behind the scenes, we'll be continuing to work on board policies and APs as well. And, and especially ones that are pertaining to student governance. And then finally, we'll be continuing to design opportunities for students to interact, to be leaders. And that includes being peer leaders as well with content and study groups, et cetera. So with that, I'm going to pause now and see if there are any questions or comments.
Questions for our board trustees?
Thank you for doing this work. It's so interesting. I was thinking about it. It's like trying to last who stars. Like they're at their first time, the constellations change and they move. So I'm commending you for getting this far, and I think it's an admirable effort. Have a whole group of students who maybe never been students before, who don't have any sense of governance and the, the way of structure and educational structure could actually assist them. So I think it's wonderful. The six that you have are going to learn a lot and hopefully get engaged in some kind of, you know, governmental or other practice down, down the line.
Thank you very much.
Another comment. I don't know if we have staff that serves as a liaison to support the students in some of this work, but I wonder if there's some opportunities for some collaborative events or that kind of thing that maybe students are, would be naturally interested, but could be sort of sponsored or highlight the work that the, that the students are doing. And this is, this is definitely challenging work to find people who are interested in things like governance or state level issues. And so a full understanding of, of how hard it is, but also I'm, I am super impressed that you found somebody who would go to the state, the state session. That is really exciting and hopefully that will, that will spread to others. But I'm, I'm excited about the work you're doing and confident that it's going to go well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I should mention, you know, all, so much credit goes to Katie Myers, our student engagement specialist, because she is our main liaison. You know, obviously, there are so many things to balance because she's trying to develop community at large, in addition to student governance, in addition to trying to create an alumni network for our 100 completers and keep them engaged. So she does a great job with collaborating with our instructors and our counselors to try to get students that we feel might be interested in leadership opportunities and, and find out who our, who our alumni are, who can come back and speak to some of their experiences and, and being involved.
Can I ask about just additional ways to work with the Student Senate? I mean, I know that along this whole process, we'll have been engaging with them and our trustees, I think have been helpful in that, connecting you to the, to that, that network. But I mean, I, I can, when I recall what, what my life was like as a student, I learned so, I learned so much from my peers. And they helped me think about leadership and getting involved in certain organizations as a student. And I, I just feel like that peer-to-peer learning is so, so important. And yeah, just as, as we think about how we develop these, you know, as we develop the policies for the, for the, you know, the student group, like how, how can they, how can they have that mentorship from some, maybe there's some people in the Student Senate that want to help in addition to our trustees? I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I love that idea.
It's, it's a great, I think, you know, we, we have had good conversation with the statewide. And I think in particular, what makes this a great moment for us to be doing this work is this is a priority for the Student Senate statewide, to get the voices of non-traditional learners, of diverse learners into the equation to, to influence and to shape and to have a voice in the policymaking and advocacy process. And so, you know, I think this is, this is an opportunity also for us to help support those broader statewide efforts that, that, you know, we very much support, obviously, because we want, we want there to be an opportunity for meaningful voice and engagement of, of the communities of learners that we serve.
I mean, the other thing that I can recall is someone that had to work multiple jobs when I was in school, like in balancing it. And I didn't have kids then. I mean, I know you have folks that are balancing a lot. You know, stipends or things, creative ways to, you know, help people, help support their engagement. Because there's always trade-offs, right? To, if I participate in this, I maybe I can't work a couple hours or I can't take care of my child and I need someone to take care of my child to, to make sure I can, you know, I can, I can be involved. So I don't know if we're thinking about those kind of creative ways to incentivize folks to be engaged. And, you know, at, at the end of the day, once you get them bought into it, I'm, they will put in more hours than a stipend probably could even cover. But sometimes you need that extra nudge, I would think, given what our students are balancing.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I love that you brought that up because we are actually actively looking at that and, and thinking through how we might work with career catalysts on providing a way to provide stipends as students learn how to, how to engage with student government.
Former board member.
You know, why, why, why shouldn't this be a paid learning opportunity, right?
Exactly.
Why shouldn't each of the, the impositions on a student's time be, be compensated? And in the long run, I know many of us in the system are eager to see that happen. And, and this is just an example of a, of a potential work in our model as well.
Trustee Tara Silva.
Yes, thank you, Ted, for your presentation. I do know that across the state, there is an issue with student participation and student engagement overall, as we're seeing applying in student population in, in general. So I totally understand this challenge, but I really liked the idea and that was actually what I was thinking about proposing, because that's what's working on statewide level is to compensate students for their time or taking time out of their day, out of their jobs, out of spending their time with their loved ones to actually do this work for bylaws and constitution. But in addition to that, I was wondering that some students, like forgetting all of my previous student government experience, if somebody approached me and asked me like to look over the constitution, I would be like, I'm not qualified to do this work. So we need to make sure that not just compensation is there, but also quality training for students to understand what they're doing and what's the purpose of the document before they actually dive into that work and do meaningful work for all Calbright students to participate in. And I think we can collaborate really with ASCC on that part and engage them as they have multiple trainings on that topic.
Thank you very much.
Other board comments? I think that.
This is member Elizondo. I have a comment. So I agree with member Tara Silva. I, I think that a stipend would be something to look into. At Santa Monica College, we do stipends for our student government per semester. I know your situation is a little different with the scheduling in terms of how that would work. But it, it's definitely, I think, been a reason why we have not had any vacancies all year long. All of our roles are completely filled and we've had maximum participation all year long in, in the amount that we've been able to have events on campus virtually and be able to continue to engage students throughout the pandemic. So a question I have actually is, when you say that the students are meeting, do you have a set meeting time that you're telling students or you're trying to coordinate a time that works for them? Like as you're finding them? Because I find that when you try to chase people down, it's a little harder to coordinate people. So I'm just curious to know if you have a set meeting time and then you're broadcasting that time? Or are you trying to find a time that works with the students?
We're trying to find time that works for our students. And at the same time, you know, depending on the committee that we're trying to get involvement in, some of those are a little bit more set. But once, once the work begins in earnest, in terms of looking over the bylaws and constitution, we want to work with their schedules as much as possible.
Okay, yeah. So my, in my experience, because this year I've been associate student president at my college, whenever I've tried to coordinate a bunch of people, it's very hard to find a time that works for everybody. So if I, if I have any suggestion, it would be maybe solidify a time that works with the staff that's supporting the students. And that way you have a set time and then you can find the students that can do that time. I don't want to eliminate anybody who's currently participating and active, engaging in those conversations. But I think also there needs to be some sort of structure. As has been mentioned, students are very busy. We have, we're juggling many obligations. And if you're leaving it up to the students to try to find and pinpoint a time, it's going to be a needle in a haystack. So, thank you.
Yeah, understood. Thank you so much.
Any other trustee comments? Is there?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So thank you so much. Then the next item is 5.2, which is the California Online Community College, which is CalBright, and the California School Employees Association, and it's CalBright Chapter Number 53. And we have Joseph Rindgartner presenting on this item.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the board. This is, these are the opening sunshine items for the first ever CSCE agreement that we will, we're very excited about going into negotiations with. They've been great labor partners and we are excited to start the bargaining process. Today's, today's both the College of Sunshine Items and CSCE Sunshine Items. And they're just for open for public comment today, and then they'll come back to you next board meeting for your, your final consideration.
Thank you. Any comments by board members? Is there any?
Public comment? There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. And we're going to go to item 5.3, which is reports on contracts and purchases. And of course, you're going to be presenting on this item.
Yes. Good morning, President, Vice President, and Board of Trustees. This is a standard item that comes in front of the board. As per board policy, 616330, staff are required to bring all contracts and purchases made by the college for review, for, for review by the board attached to the list of contracts for your review.
Any questions from our board members? Seeing that, is there any public comments?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. Then we're now down to our constituency reports. And first up, we have the CalBright Academic Senate report from Michael Stewart.
So good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the board. My name is Michael Stewart. I'm outside of the Brady Box Square right now, coming to you live in person. What a great day, especially a day that we've had many firsts in CalBright. You know, our, our union working hard to get that contract ratified back in person, right? So I felt that Senate should be here to introduce themselves to you live and in person. And for those of you in the other LA part, welcome. Hello. Thank you, Michael Stewart. So I'll begin. First off, we want to talk to you about the faculty participation and helping to develop the DAX Self-Evaluation Report. The Senate and faculty have been working very hard on this. Tamika O'Connor has kept us involved in the loop and she has presented to the Senate at our last board meeting the beginning of the docs, so that we will now look at those and look those over and give them our stamp of approval or also just our recommendations. Next up, WF510, which is our career readiness course, is being piloted with two different partners, Adult Ed and EDD. It's not a program that we're rolling through right now, but it's one that's going to be piloted with partnerships. IT500, which is IT support, and IT510, which is cybersecurity, is going through major course revisions. We will now have hands-on labs for the students, virtual hands-on labs. So they will be able to now apply the learning technique that they've read about with some functionality, which will give them a better leg up when they're going to take the exam. So we felt that this was a tremendous step forward for them. They've been asking for this. And the college and the faculty are finally able to provide this for them. Our IT520 and IT525, which is a CRM course, have been updated with new material. An additional course with optional bonus content has been created. So we're looking at creating better student engagement for better attention and retention in our courses right now. And we fill that with gamification and other fun things for them to do besides learning and reading will help them understand and absorb the content. Again, our students are, are completing our programs, IT support, cybersecurity and CRM. But in order to prepare them for the exam, we are offering our exam preps. And we're going to be offering, rolling what we call rolling just walk-in subject-specific meetings for the students, where they can come in and it's going to be a topic each week that now we're working on this and students can come in and learn about that. And so we feel that the more engagement that we have with the students proactively, the better they will be, the better their experience at CalBright will be. And hopefully I will get them moving forward in the future to their new careers. Once again, our faculty is working very hard to help our students and to sustain that CalBright image that you guys are all working very hard to uphold for us. I thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in person and thank you for allowing me to appear outside of the Brady Box Square.
I actually have a question in regards to one of the parties that'll be. You mentioned that students' feedback was that they are missing the laps from their courses, right? And I was wondering if we have a standardized process of course evaluation? Is that how students are giving the feedback? And if not, like, would it be? Is it in?
At the present moment, we don't have a rubric that gives, you know, judges us on our feedback or the course, but we are working on that in our new revisions. And that's also in part of what Tamika is working on in our DAX evaluation. How do we look back at our courses and evaluate them? So for the student feedback right now, it's just been through study sessions, Slack messages, and just when we're in exam prep, it would be great if I had a lab. And as an instructor who is very well-versed in IT, I understand the importance of, this is a memory chip. This is where it goes on the, on the motherboard, you know, instead of reading at it and looking at it, something that is 3D that allows them to place it there.
Right.
And, and that's what we were looking at. But we are developing ways to get that feedback and as we do course revisions in the future.
Yeah, that would be fantastic if students, usually how it goes on Canvas, I have a shell pop up and students go in and just give the feedback about the course. But without, like, not faculty cannot access it, so students feel safe giving the feedback.
We're looking for pre-evaluations and post-evaluations after the programs.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in person. Nice to see you live in the flesh. And we look forward to a long and productive relationship.
Thank you. Senate felt if you guys can show up, it was important for us to show up also.
That's awesome.
Thank you guys for your time.
Well, our next constituency group report is from the California School Employees Association.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Denise Tmall, and I'd like to introduce myself as the new president of the CalBright Faculty Association. We are proud to acknowledge the major milestones that the CalBright Faculty Association and CalBright College have reached together by developing our first tentative agreement, now our contract. This is an historic moment. CFA would like to extend our gratitude to CalBright, the CalBright bargaining team, CalBright leadership, and the Board of Trustees. Reaching this milestone has not been without its challenges. As a small faculty body, our capacity is limited, which has resulted in high turnover in our bargaining team and at times a bargaining team consisting of one faculty member. Thus, I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of the members of our bargaining unit, many of whom were part of the bargaining team at some point in our process, and to our current CalBright bargaining team members for their commitment and dedication. Our work together is still in a nascent stage. Moving forward, we will continue to bargain and address. Moving forward, we will continue to bargain and address critical articles. CFA's priorities are to work with Calbright in establishing language addressing class size, student load, overload, and benefits, among other articles. With the goal of evaluating of elevating faculty working conditions to a more equitable standard. We engage in this process as mission driven faculty members so that we may better serve our students. To close, CFA would like to congratulate our classified union, CSEA, for taking steps to initiate the bargaining process. To quote our founding president, Ashley Odell, we look forward to working together, faculty and classified, to continue building a Calbright that is both a great place to work and a transformative place for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next. Report is from the California School Employees Association report, Anya Elder.
Good morning, trustees. My name is Anya Elder, and I've worked at Calbright for two and a half years. I currently support the Human Resources Department. And if you know me, you know that I am deeply committed to the mission and vision of Calbright. I work every day to further that and to support the college. Today, I'm here to continue my support and to step into the role as the chapter president. For Calbright Chapter fifty three of California School Employees Association. This is my first time addressing the board, so I am a little nervous, but I did want to give you an introduction to CSEA. CSEA was formed ninety five years ago, and it was formed in my hometown of Oakland, so very proud of that. And it was started by a group of custodians who got together to fight for. Retirement, fight for pension, because otherwise they would not have been able to afford to retire. Today, CSEA actually represents quarter of a million classified employees across California. Including thirteen thousand who are part of the California Community Colleges. I am deeply humbled and honored to be a part of this work. The sense of justice that animated our founding as CSEA lives on in our current mission statement. To improve the lives of our members, our students, and community. This mission will guide everything we do as a chapter at Calbright, from our first public letter to you, to 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 you and our coworkers. As well as our initial proposal, which you reviewed today. And you will notice our mission is complementary and in support of Calbright's mission, which centers on closing equity gaps for working Californians. While we're still in the early days of our chapter's history and establishing a relationship with Calbright management. I am cautiously optimistic that together we will build a workplace that will recruit and retain exceptional talent. To ensure the success of Calbright, and most importantly, our students. I look forward to updating you in the future on the status of our negotiations and work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so that is our constituency boards. It's open for public forum. Are there any public comments?
Yes, in Sacramento, we have Eric Kalimagi.
Kalimagi.
You've got it.
I'm trying.
Hello, my name is Eric Kalimagi, and I'm coming you today as a private citizen of the state of California. I'd like to open my comments by congratulating Julia Tarasova on her service to this board and to the Board of Governors. Student trustees of the Board of Governors are almost always highly intelligent, dedicated, articulate individuals. But even amongst their number, Ms. Tarasova stands out. I've watched her little rectangle on my computer for quite a few meetings during this pandemic, and I've been truly impressed by the power of her advocacy. I wish you well in your future endeavors. You may notice that I introduced myself as a private citizen. In my professional life, I serve as the Community College Association President. And for a time, I came to this Calbright board meeting on a routine basis to advocate for Calbright's new faculty. I no longer need to do this. Calbright now has its own faculty association. You heard Ms. Tamal just a few minutes ago, you just approved their contract. Calbright is maturing as an institution. I congratulate the Calbright Faculty Association for their hard work. And I celebrate their ability to speak to you directly about their own needs and aspirations. Putting these two musings together, an important question arises. Noting that Calbright is perhaps the only California Community College in the state where there is not a student trustee chosen from amongst the students at the college. What steps must still be taken to support a vibrant student government and an independent Calbright student voice? I urge you to not be discouraged by low interest. Indeed, at any college, only a few percent of students or faculty, for that matter. Actively take on an active interest in governmental leadership. Still, I encourage the Calbright Board to work to establish a student trustee position to be chosen from. And by the election of Calbright students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? There are no other public comments, President Haynes. The work of the Board of Trustees is complete, and so I think we shall adjourn.
Just get up.